Is that our better adjustment of the chair? Welcome to the January ninth reward meeting, the first reward meeting on first day of school, I think of 2023. So happy new year, everybody. Just oh.
I need to put on my mic. I'd like to remind everybody we run our meetings and according to the core values of the district. Respect dignity, honesty, responsibility and teamwork. And we hope that everybody also follows those core values. And we are excited today. I think we get to have, we have Amity kindergarten here to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you guys will come up, that would be great. And I'll stand for them. Please do take over.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing and leading us in the pledge. You guys do it so much better. You've had more practice than we adults. So we're glad that you have a chance to talk to us. Now, everybody wave to your mom and dad. You see your mom, dad out there way. Yeah. And we want you to get, we want you to introduce yourselves. So when you go in into a public meeting, you have to say who, what your name is. And I know that your teacher is Mrs. Ghetto, right? Yep. So you get to say who you're, what your name is.
Tolly. Millie. Piper. Mac. Carter. Hala ya. Ollie.
Yeah, I have a kind of a magic gift for you. And this is a ruler. And if you hold on to it really tight, it's going to do something. You'll see what it does. Ready? Hold on to it really tight. See what it does. Okay, ready? Okay, now, so while you're holding on to it. All ready? Yes, we're going to give your teacher a magic ruler too, because she might talk to you about it when you guys get back to school. Who can tell me, I want you to raise your hand if you tell me a fun thing that you did today in school. Rory, what did you do fun?
Playing. Yeah. Yeah.
What is something else that somebody did fun today?
Playing at recess. Playing at recess. Having my birthday. Going crazy.
And, and you know what? Your teacher is still smiling. So I think she really likes you. What's your one more thing? She loves this place. Well, this is kind of like our big meeting room. It is probably bigger than your classroom, and we have lots of people here. And this is kind of where we do the job of, of running schools. But saying the pledge of allegiance is always our funnest part of our meeting. So we're so glad that you came. So who, has anybody noticed anything funny about their ruler? It does. If you, if you hold your thumb on it long enough, you'll see your fingerprint in the ruler. Okay. And it might get whiter and whiter and whiter if you leave your hand in one place over a long period of time. Okay? So say goodbye. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's calling your teacher.
Well, thank you very much to Amity and Melissa Ghetto. And I don't know if the little girl on the end, I believe was trustee Gregory's granddaughter. Rory, so kind of fun to have connections back to schools, but that is one of the more fun things we're going to do tonight. Well, actually, no, we have a lot of fun things to do tonight. With that, we'll move on to, we have some red and gold apple video arts. We have them from December as well as January. So we're going to be going through a few of those. We're going to go through four of them. And we will start with the December 22 red apple award. And I think we're going to play a video.
Since 1974, Boise School District has recognized outstanding professional educators with the Red Apple Award. The highest award presented monthly during the school year to certified staff members by the Boise School Board. The Red Apple Award honors teachers who consistently perform above and beyond the call of duty in fulfilling their responsibilities. And supporting the district's mission of educating today for a better tomorrow. We are honored today to recognize an individual who has served students in Boise schools for more than 13 years. Darren Anderson goes above and beyond the call of his profession every day. Year after year, he demonstrates his true dedication to the ever-changing needs of his students. Comments have been made about how the student transition education program has evolved, and some of that evolution has made his position more challenging. Darren has risen to the challenge and has done so with a positive attitude and a think outside of the box approach. When, when the class is not at the readiness level to work on a job site, Darren brings a job site to them with unique work experiences where students give back to the community. When his class goes on walks and are met with tree branches growing over into the sidewalks, making it unsafe for students, Darren spends his weekends trimming trees. When a student needs breakfast to help regulate his body, Darren makes, Darren supplies cereal options for the entire class. When unsafe situations arise in classrooms due to varying needs of students, Darren makes sure he is on the front lines. Giving up his workspace to meet the personal care needs of a student and to serve as a calming space for another student is not even a question. Darren's dedication to helping students in any way he can is unmatched. He provides us with an example of a teacher who truly wants what is best for students. Doing all of those things on top of writing his own curriculum. Arranging transportation, buying supplies for the classroom, food for students, supporting and leading the paraprofessionals in his classroom. And meeting the daily expectations of any good teacher is all done with a positive attitude and without complaint. It is our distinct honor to present the Red Apple Award for December 12th, 2022 to Darren Anderson, Special Education Teacher. Student Transition Education Program for outstanding service to education and for educating today for a better tomorrow. Congratulations.
Thank you, Maria, for representing the board. Thank you, the superintendentcy for showing up today. And for all my students who showed up for this honor and the staff that I work with. It's a pleasure to come and work with you every day. And the challenges that we meet, I enjoy coming and seeing you and working, getting you out into the community. I'm very proud when I'm out there on the streets with you and I get to show my class to the community and represent yourselves into our community. I want to thank Jen. She was there from the first year that I started STEP 13 years ago as a para. I want to thank Amy, who was my representative, my support person and resource when I started at River Glen. To Liz and to Mark, who have supported us as we have made this transition into this building and into this new era of STEP. I want to thank my three staff, Shannon, Shannon and Sandy, who come every day and go well beyond. This is not a one-person job. This is a team group. Brian, Chris and Kim, we work together as a group to educate these young men and women. And to get them out into our community, into job sites, and to get them on to the next step of their life, because this is not going to be their life in this building. Their life is out there. And that's our job every day is to get them out to the community and show them what they could have. And ask them to advocate for themselves. So again, I'm humbled that, for the honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. First, I want to thank my parents and my sister, my niece, JT, for coming and supporting. I want to thank everybody that I work with. I see faces here that I've worked with at River Glen. Down at, you know, different parts of the district, and I appreciate all this support. I want to thank my husband for coming and giving the biggest support of, you know, being able to come and do this job every day. I work with some amazing young men and women. And that is our, our job is to get them from the high school out into the world where you get to see them every day and not hide them away. So thank you for allowing us to do that every day.
And next we'll go on to the Gold Apple Award for December of 2022.
Since 1994, Boise School District has recognized outstanding classified staff members in the district with the Golden Apple Award. This is the highest award presented monthly during the school year by the Boise School District Board to classified staff members. The Golden Apple Award honors support staff members who consistently perform above and beyond the call of duty in fulfilling their job responsibilities. And supporting the district's mission of educating today for a better tomorrow. Today, we are honored to recognize an individual who has served the students of the Boise School District for more than 10 years. It isn't every day that you come across employees who go above and beyond, have a great attitude and exhibit all of the district's core values. Facilities and Operations is lucky enough to have an employee working for us who does this very thing. Taylor Trelore exceeds our expectations in respect, dignity, honesty, responsibility and teamwork. By consistently going above and beyond the requests made of his department. Taylor answers calls and work orders requests with enthusiasm and utilizes teamwork to get the job done to the best of his ability. And more quickly than most people would think possible. He is self-motivated and bring those around him up to a higher level. He helps with all the moving parts of the warehouse. He helps make sure that school sites get the items they need so they can perform for students. The warehouse crew considers Taylor a friend, and he always treats the warehouse team with high respect. His organizational skills are what keeps the supply and book warehouses looking as neat as they are. His people skills, combined with great communication and listening skills, make him an invaluable team member. We love what he does for the team every day in terms of motivating them, helping them solve problems and always being there for them. Taylor Trelore, AKA Freaky Fast. Is a valuable team player, and we thank him for that. Taylor is polite, helpful, friendly, quick with a kind word and a smile, and just an all-around great guy. His positive attitude and sense of humor can make even difficult tasks tolerable. We need people like Taylor and are proud to have him on our warehouse team. It is my distinct honor to represent the Golden Apple Award for December 12th, 2022 to Taylor Trelore. Warehouse Lead, Facilities and Operations for outstanding service to education and for educating today for a better tomorrow.
First off, I'd just like to say thanks to everybody being here. I truly do feel grateful and honored to be standing up here right now. I love this job. I love being here with all you guys. Specifically, I first think my boss, George. George allowed me to be in this position. He hired me five years ago into this, and I have been thankful ever since. I feel like I have the best job in the world. I want to thank the school board for nominating me, helping me get this award. And then everybody in the front office up here from Tom, Tatiana, Candy, Jeff, Seth, everybody. You guys are all amazing people to work with, and I truly value you guys' friendships. And you guys are great employees and even better friends. And mostly I want to thank the warehouse guys, our crew. I think George can agree with me that neither of us would have been standing up here without our guys. They are the true backbone of what we do, and they do all the, the hard work. I always tell, tell people I have the easiest job in the district. I've got it so made and so easy. Everybody, they just, the guys out there, they work their butts off for us. They never miss a deadline, and they're the ones out there in the freezing cold doing all the music equipment. And out there in the heat moving all the schools when it's 100 degrees outside. Just being from a small town in Iowa, not being from here originally, a lot of people always ask me if they know my history about my family back home and how much they're valued to me. And they always ask me, you know, why do I stay here in Boise when I have all my family back in Iowa? And I always tell them the answer is simple. It's this job. It's about the people and about the relationships and the connections you've had. And I feel like I owe it to everybody here to stay here and work my hardest. You know, it's not easy sometimes, or sometimes I go home at night and I always question myself, like, what am I doing here? But, you know, even my mom and my parents, they say, you know, you owe it to everybody to be out here and, and, you know, do your job and people are counting on you. And it's, this job has given me so much more than what I can ever give back to them. I will forever be indebted to this place. And God willing, hopefully I'll be here as long as you guys want me. And like I said, I can't, I don't, I can't. Put into words how much this means to me and how honored I am. And I just thank you very much. So.
Tremendous attitude. I think that's why you're here. So thank you so much. Here is your Golden Apple Award. Well deserved. It is very happy. I think you can handle it. And if you want to say more words, here's your chance.
I'll keep it short, kind of what I said before. With this job, I just want to thank my boss, George. I want to thank Faith, Shelley, RT, Chris. You know, Becca, all the ones that came before me, Allison, Danny Backer, Benji, all these guys. That make me feel like a part of a team and something, being a part of something bigger. Which I feel like I feel pretty privileged because I think next to school, security of safety of kids. You got to feed them and you got to make sure they have the curriculum. And I get to be part of two of those. But like I said, I just want to say thank you. You know, I don't remember 99% of the work orders or the emails I answer, but I do remember all the connections and the friendships and the people I've met. And that's something that I will carry with me forever, a lot more than any kind of email or work order that we do. So thank you, guys.
And now on to the January 2023 Red Apple Award.
Since 1974, the Boise School District has recognized outstanding professional education with the Red Apple Award, the highest award presented monthly during the school year to certified staff members by the Boise School Board. The Red Apple honors teachers who consistently perform above and beyond the call of duty in fulfilling their responsibilities and supporting the district's mission of educating today for a better tomorrow. We are honored today to recognize an individual who has served students in Boise schools for nearly 20 years. Candace Cooper has served the district's youngest and highest-need students in the early childhood special education classrooms at Jackson and Morley Nelson Elementary Schools and currently at Madison Early Childhood Center. Special educators know that children develop resilience through natural processes while others need help. These early years hold great promise for interventions to prevent and reduce risk, direct resources, promote competence, and build a strong foundation for further development through education. Candace is a shining star or a beautifully polished red delicious apple who has risen to the top of her profession because of who she is as a person, as an educator, and what she has done for the students whom she serves. Her passion and dedication to early childhood education is exceptional and deserving of special recognition. Candace approaches her position with humility and grace. She honored, she honorably serves the families of the district as well as her colleagues, including many young teachers just starting their careers in early childhood development. With unwavering belief in their ability to learn, Candace engages with every student in her classroom regardless of their disabilities. She serves the Head Start program in the same fashion. It is our distinct honor to present the Red Apple Award for January 9th, 2023, to Candace Cooper, Special Education Teacher, Madison Early Childhood Center, for outstanding service to education and for educating today for a better tomorrow. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank Regina for nominating me and the school board. I'd also like to thank all the administrators and supervisors that I've had all these years who have supported me so much. And I really think, you know, I feel like I want to have all of Madison come up here with me, because I truly believe that I want to accept this award on behalf of the Madison Early Childhood Center team and Head Start, because I truly feel that it takes a village to do what we do every day with our little ones. So thank you. Thank you so much, and I'm so honored for this award.
Congratulations to you, and thank you so much for everything that you do. And here is your word, and you're welcome to say. It's heavy. Do it. But you're welcome.
Yeah, I am more comfortable with tiny humans. Again, thank you to Regina for nominating me. I also want my husband Chad here today, and my daughter Emma, my parents too. Also wanted to thank all the administrators that I've had, pastors, supervisors, mentors, Snee Muller, wanted to reach out to you, because she was my first mentor when I started at Jackson. So it's crazy to think it's been 20, 20 years. I just think, wow, a lot can happen. I've been thinking about early childhood and how, what happens at the beginning of life has such a profound impact on a person's life throughout their life. As Kim was saying about therapists that we've worked with, that were asked, it's the very first experience that families have that education, special education. So we really want to, you know, our best, first, you know, great foot forward. So I just think that as early childhood educators, we can have a positive lasting impact on children. Also wanted to have a special thank you to Mary Beth, because she's my partner. And at Madison, it truly is a team effort, for sure. I'm so lucky to work there.
And last but not least, the January 2023 Golden Apple Award.
Since 1994, the Boise School District has recognized outstanding classified staff members in the district with the Golden Apple Award. This is the highest award presented monthly during the school year by the Boise School Board to classified staff members. The Golden Apple Award honors support staff members who consistently perform above and beyond the call of duty in fulfilling their job responsibilities and supporting the district's mission of educating today for a better tomorrow. We are honored to recognize an individual who has served the students of the Boise School District for 20 years. Phil Killian does so much for LeBois Junior High School. It would be impossible to list it all. On a daily basis, Mr. Killian greets students as they get off the bus in the morning. He supervises during break and lunch, helps keep the building secure, and substitutes in classes. However, what he really does is build relationships and positive support, a positive rapport with students and staff. Mr. Killian always lets staff know when students are with him, and staff members know that work will get completed when sent to his room. They know he will cover their class if they need to attend a meeting, and it will be productive. Students know Mr. Killian by first name, and he knows all of them. They know they can go to help, go to him for help and that he will hold them accountable. There have been many students who, after having to spend time with him due to the consequences of their actions, request to work with him later. Mr. Killian also recognizes the students who demonstrate the LeBois values and nominates them for Students of the Month. It is our district's distinct honor to present the Golden Apple Award for January 9th, 2023, which will be when our board meeting takes place, to Phil Killian, the in-house detention supervisor at LeBois Junior High School, for outstanding service to education and for educating today for a better tomorrow. Here are your words of nomination. Who's your statistic?
It has been amazing working for 20 years with great, amazing teachers and staff, and they have inspired me to be the best person I can be here at LeBois Junior High. Thank you very much.
Here's your word, Phil. Just seeing the faces of the students of LeBois and seeing the difference you made, it was really an honor to present you with that award. If you have any additional words you want to share?
Just wanted to say thank you to my wife, not here today, she's not feeling well, but she's driving a force behind me. And thank you, Chad, for nominating me. I really appreciate it very much. And thanks to all the teachers and administrators and staff that I've worked with for Black History and the kids that I've worked with as well. Thanks so much for everything. Thank you.
This is a really fun night. We have lots and lots of awards, which so, super, I mean, thanks so much to the gold. We have a situation. Rusty Haas can no longer sit. Oh, careful. The deputy superintendent does do everything. Happy to have two more awards to give for tonight that were, were put off from December, but still very important. It means a lot to us. So I think we're going to start with the winner card. I, the winter card, I can't even say it. Winter card, art, winner.
And I think I switched it too, so don't worry about it.
Go, Benji. Take this one.
All right. So thank you. I'm Benji Simmons. I'm the Fine Performance Arts Supervisor for our district. And like Trustee just said, that we are giving our awards today for December that were supposed to be for them, but we had a snow day, as you know. So we were not able to do those days. We're doing them today. So the first one we're going to do is our St. Alphonsus Award. And so let me just read a little bit about this so you guys understand what we're doing. It's a, the first award recognizes the creator of our year, this year's St. Alphonsus Foundation winner in the Boise School District Winter Art Contest. The Winter Art Contest is held in conjunction with the Festival of Trees each year. This art contest generates hundreds of entries from our elementary students. And in fact, the total number of this year was 1,400 people that put in for our award this year. So really cool. The St. Alphonsus Foundation, who organizes Festival of Trees, chose a winner at the festival, and we are celebrating that person first tonight. So I'm going to ask Elizabeth and her family, unless you want to come by yourself, come on up. She wants mom. I, I've learned this, that they always want someone to come with them, so it's good. So as you can imagine, it's very difficult to choose this, just one piece. And I'm delighted to announce that Mountain View Elementary School student Elizabeth Allen is this year's St. Alphonsus Foundation Grand Prize recipient. So. So Elizabeth's art was chosen by the foundation. It was used as their holiday card this year. Elizabeth is a second grade student in Miss Strickler's class, is that correct? At Mountain View Elementary, and this is her winning artwork right here. So would you like to tell us a little bit about your artwork and how you felt when you learned that you were a winner?
I was surprised when I was, when I found out I was a winner, because we were just going to the Festival of Trees, and we just randomly saw it.
What is, what is the picture of?
My grandmother's door with a wreath on it.
Grandma's door with a wreath on it. So this is Nancy back in from St. Alice, and she can come on out too. She wanted to say a few words to you as well, and I'll have her words.
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to help recognize Elizabeth and the wonderful piece of art that she designed. It was a really hard decision, but your piece stood out so much to us. The colors were beautiful, and it really embodied what we thought the holidays represented this year, which just was the simplicity of celebrating with friends and family. So we appreciate your willingness to allow us to have that as our design. And in recognition of that, we're going to provide you guys copies of those cards that we mailed out, and I think we have a couple other things, right?
So you'll also be getting a $25 gift certificate to quality art, and then you have your holiday cards as well. And then another prize from the art cottage, that we give you some art stuff that you can use there. And congratulations, Elizabeth. We're really happy for you. Thank you. And when I found out, is this brother, brother also got third? So pretty cool that way, too. I know he, he wanted to tell me that as we got him, like, awesome. We'll celebrate that too. So that's pretty cool. So good. All right. So in conjunction with that, we also have our second winner tonight. And so this is our district award that we give, that we choose personally for ourselves. And again, this was selected from those same 1,400 students along with this year. And we recognize first through third places for each grade level, and then we recognize the top 100 kids overall that we choose for this as well. So there's a lot that we give for this. This selection was difficult, and just to narrow it down to one piece out of 1,400, as you can tell. And we're delighted to announce that Cynthia Mann Elementary Student Andy Johnson is this year's grand prize recipient. So come on up, Andy. So this award, when we do these, to select, just so you know, we put them all up in here, another room, and then everybody in this building goes around and picks what they think is their best. And then the grand prize winner is picked by our superintendency. They go through and pick out the one that they feel, so these were the people that did yours. So I don't know if we have his up here that we can do. You can tell us a little bit about it. So go ahead, Andy.
So my picture is about like a lodge, and we've been to Redfish a lot. So I wanted to draw it about Redfish. And I love ice skating, too. So I drew a lake, and I enjoy art a lot. I was super surprised and excited. And I really love art, so I was really excited.
We have some gifts for you as well. So he as well will be getting the $25 gift certificate, and he received his cards too before, and then another prize from our art cottage. So Nandi wanted to make sure, he came up and asked me, do we have art in junior high? And I said, of course we do. We have a lot of classes you can take. So he's going to continue doing that. So thank you again, Andy. Congratulations. And I'm done.
Thank you, Benji. And congratulations to both Elizabeth and Andy. Shows that art is alive and well in our schools, and you guys are fine. You know, I wish I could draw that well. So very cool. And that's kind of the end of the beginning. Well, we have one more award to do later, but if you guys want to go, you're welcome to leave now. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for showing us your art, even, even cooler. Very fun. All right. We'll go ahead and move forward next. On the, on our agenda is RASV reports, and I think we're going to start with Capital High School tonight.
All right. Well, good evening, distinguished board members, President Wagers and Superintendent Dennis. My name is Jackson Pierce, and I'm joined today by Lily Lawrence. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about Capital High School.
The last time we met, we talked about our mission for the year to build a more positive school culture at Capital. We contributed to this mission largely with one of our biggest projects of the year, Kindness Week. This week was targeted solely on building positive school culture as well as building relations with our community and other schools.
So Kindness Week is the week consisting So Kindness Week is the week consisting of the different themes of kindness that we believe that highlight the different components of what creates a positive school culture. Our goal for the week was to have a second period activity that encompasses this theme of the day, as well as an event that furthers the theme, as well as provides school-wide opportunities for bonding. So Monday's theme was to be kind to others, which our second period activity was to reach out to five people you haven't seen in a while, and tell them how much you appreciate them. As well as before school, we got donations from Blue Sky Bagels, Albertsons, and Krispy Kreme, where we had a little getting to know you activity, where our students could mingle with each other and talk to students they may have not met before, as well as our complimentary breakfast to start the week off on very high notes.
Our overall theme for Tuesday was to be kind to yourself. For our second period activity, students wrote what they love about themselves on a colorful sticky note. And then we stuck the sticky notes on a what do you love about yourself poster that went in the foyer of our school, so that everybody could see everybody's favorite aspect about themselves. And our event for that day was held by our wonderful counselors, where students came to the auditorium where a presentation about mental health was given. And the counselors also provided a few mental health resources that kids could utilize.
So for Wednesday, our theme was to be kind to your community. For our second period activity, each class wrote a thank you card to a capital business, which we all hand delivered personally, as was the event for the day was as a student council. We sent three to four student council members to each of the seven elementary feeder schools. And to continue our kindness theme, we set up kindness card stations where our elementary students could write thank you notes to their teachers, which they all hand delivered, as well as my favorite part, which was playing with them during lunch.
Our theme for Thursday was be kind to your teachers. So we had students write thank you notes to their teachers during second period, and then they were able to hand deliver them personally during break. Teachers also had the opportunity to write notes to each other, to show their appreciation for their colleagues. We also delivered sodas to our teachers during second period. We stopped by each classroom, so we just wanted to do that to show our appreciation all day.
And then lastly for Friday, our theme was to be kind to your school. This was our Kindness Week assembly, where we opened it with the National Anthem performed by our choir. And then we followed up with our Cuts for Kindness, where nine girls donated eight plus inches of their hair to the Cuts for Kindness organization, which was an organization that takes hair donations and turns them into wigs for cancer patients, which is a really special opportunity that we get to do at Capital. And then we had our staff versus student basketball game, which during halftime, our club unified, did some of their football warm-up practices, which they were gonna perform earlier or later in the day at their football game. And then after that, we had our Teachers Got Talent performance, where teachers formed groups and performed lip sync battles against each other, which the students voted for during the assembly to increase our involvement. And then lastly, we did our CHS fight song, performed at the end by our band.
One of our favorite ways to advertise our events and get teachers involved, as well as our door decorating competition. We encourage teachers to decorate their doors to the theme of kindness. We were so pleased with the teachers' participation and the positive feedback we got from both students and teachers during this Kindness Week.
And then the last aspect of our week was our dress up days, which were held every single day, ranging from Adam Sandler Day to Country vs. Country Club. This is one of our favorite parts of the week, because a question we always ask ourselves in the classroom is how do we gauge our goal of creating a positive school culture? And we believe that this really encompasses it all, from the participation that we get from our students during spirit days and dress up days and the attendance at our events. We can really measure if we're succeeding and creating that positive school culture, and if students really enjoy coming to Capital and all the work that we put in for them. That is all, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Great report. There's a fight at the end, so we get to go first. I'm gonna give it to Rusty Langley first, and then we'll go to Rusty Oppenheimer. Rusty Oppenheimer always gets to go first.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you guys. I heard a lot at home about all of that you guys have been doing. And also, when I, as a business owner of the community, I got outreach from your guys' group. And I just continue to see how you are creating a culture that includes teachers and students and the community around you, and I think that that is, I can't applaud that enough. It is amazing, and it's clear that you've made a lot of effort to include everybody in your community towards kindness and towards connection. And I've really seen a huge cultural uplift since you guys got back from COVID. That shows in my own kids who are involved in all that you do. So I just appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Rusty Oppenheimer.
Thank you, and I echo Rusty Langley for sure. I love how purposeful all of your days were, as Rusty Langley mentioned, to connect with various audiences. And I loved the one where be kind to others, to reach out to five people that maybe you haven't talked to in a while. I think it's a really good reminder for all of us to do something like that. So I'm gonna take your kindness day, and I'm gonna do that this week. So thank you for that, for that good reminder, and thank you for a great report and all you're doing.
Thank you.
Couple more.
Trusty, trusty, you're out of the narrative, President Wagers, Mr. Pierce and Florence. I really love the be kind to yourself message. I think that, like, that's something that is so important, sometimes we overlook it, because it's like, you know, we all want to like support our community, and I think in all of our schools, there's so much dedication to our community, but it's like, you gotta be there for yourself first, right? And so I really appreciated you highlighting that and providing opportunity for the counselors to talk about those mental health resources that are provided in our district. I was wondering who won the staff versus student contest?
It was the staff, I believe, yeah, staff always wins.
You'll go next one.
Well, thank you for.
Is it a fair game? Is it really a fair game? I'm guessing who the referees are. Trusty Hawes?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo, I mean, kind to yourself is something that really stood out to me, I think, in this day. And a lot of pressure that students are going, you know, through. And don't forget about yourself, so it's great, great message. I'm really glad that, yeah, that was a highlight of the kindness campaign. And I just wanna, but just wanna point out to the rest of trustees, Jackson is also on the student advisory committee. And Capital hosted the last committee meeting, and just wanted to express thankfulness for that. But just really enjoying the vibe as I always do, and walking through the hallways of Capital. So great job, and I always enjoy Capital. I had the privilege of speaking at Capital's graduation last year, and Capital has such a great vibe. So I just appreciate Capital and everything you do. And yes, I'm sucking up to President Wagers right now.
Thank you.
And Principal Gardner. Anything else, anybody else? Well, thank you, Jackson, I really appreciate your time and appreciate your report. Nice job.
Thank you.
And next we'll hear from Boise High.
President Wagers, Superintendent Dennis, and members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for welcoming us to represent Boise High School. My name is Adriana Curtis, and I'm the junior ambassador.
And my name is Shannon Kyle, and I'm a junior representative.
This past quarter, classes got more intense and workloads got heavier. Because of this, we work to keep the Boise High atmosphere positive and continue to unite the students. Our Zen Den is a room with couches and rugs that is always available to students who need to take a break. They can talk to their teacher or counselor and get excused for one class period to meditate, color, or relax. This room is a resource that helps us to acknowledge the stress of high school, while discouraging bad habits like skipping school when it gets rough. This year, we hosted our first ever de-stress week, the week before finals, to try to lighten the mood amongst the students. We started the week on Tuesday with Wear Winter Hat Day, and we invited therapy dogs to come and hang out with the students during lunch. On Wednesday, we had a pajama day and had representatives from the local menstrual cup company, Salt, present about menstrual inequity. On Thursday, we had an ugly sweater day with an inclusibility fun run and a girls' basketball game. Friday was a Boise High Spirit Day, and we had a hot chocolate and tea bar during lunch. Throughout the whole week, we had an Xbox set up in the library for students to play video games at break and lunch. A large portion of teachers and students participated in the dress up days and events. Another event we put on to lighten the mood and get students in the holiday spirit was a movie night. We showed National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation and sold candy at the door. We also had a door decorating contest, in which teachers and their fourth period classrooms had a chance to decorate their door holiday theme, and participate in a contest for a pizza party. It made the hallways very festive and fun.
This holiday season, we made gift baskets for our amazing clubs, who have done a lot for our school and community. For example, Green Club is currently planning their elementary school outreach program, and they have done three trash cleanups the past couple of months. Humanitarian Club has been working, or has been writing letters to veterans and teachers, and helping janitors clean after school. Young Democrats Club had Melissa Winthrop, an Idaho senator, as a guest speaker a couple weeks ago. Gaming Club has been participating in many competitions. Our diverse club activity keeps the student body engaged in happenings in the school and community.
Additionally, fun activities in the classrooms have kept school days interesting. District 19 Representative Chris Mathias visited our avid and leadership classes to talk about government and leadership in Boise. Speech and debate have both done a great job with individual and team wins at different competitions, including the Canyon County Classic, Meridian Madness, and Holiday Havoc tournaments. The Spanish Globales class found ways to use demonstrative adjectives in a real-world application by researching fashion influencers and its effects on the environment, then presenting a fashion show to Whittier Elementary students. Sports medicine classes built lungs using soda bottles and balloons to demonstrate how they work. These are just some examples of how learning takes place in creative ways around Boise High every day.
This quarter, our leadership team has focused a lot on helping our community. During this holiday season, we have had multiple drives to help fellow students and community members. For example, we held a shoe drive to donate shoes and socks to new Americans within our school who did not have closed-toed shoes for the winter. In November, we partnered with the Humane Society to do an aluminum can drive. And we held a food drive for the Boise Rescue Mission to contribute to homeless men, women, and children in the Treasure Valley. This drive was a huge success, and one single class brought over 300 food items to donate.
This year, we hosted our annual Friendsgiving. Friendsgiving is an event at lunch with our student leadership and all of the new American students at Boise High. At lunch the week before Thanksgiving break, our student leadership prepares a big buffet with Thanksgiving food provided by brave parents and teachers. We invite all of the new American students to come eat and play games with us. This was successful in connecting our leadership students with new Americans, introducing them to one of our country's traditions, and it was a lot of fun.
Winter sports are underway, and students are loving them. Our snow team traveled to Sun Valley for a fun weekend of skiing and snowboarding. Wrestling has been traveling near and far to compete in tournaments with our second-largest group of wrestlers. And girls' basketball has had a great start to their season and hosted a parent-daughter clinic for young girls to learn basketball skills with their parents. Boys' basketball has also had an exciting start to the season, winning a few games by very small margins. Student sections have been loud and fun with themes such as Pajamas USA, Winter Gear, and Ugly Sweater. Cheer and dance do a great job cheering and performing at halftime. We are also trying to make basketball games more fun with halftime games, such as musical chairs or bump when we don't have performers.
We have also had a ton of performing arts, concerts, and events this past quarter. We have concerts for choir, band, orchestra, and guitar. Our choir and orchestra also performed in the rotunda of the Capitol Building for the holidays. Additionally, our choir hosted their annual medieval-themed Madrigal Dinner. The theater program staged a Midsummer Night's Dream, which was a big hit amongst our student body. And our art classes put on a winter art show for people to view pieces displayed in gallery style in the hallways.
This year, we have tried to make our student body feel like they have a say in what goes on at Boise High. We have recently introduced the Brave Box. This is a mailbox that we keep outside our student leadership classroom. We have paper and pens in there, so students can come by and write down any suggestions that they have for our class. We are currently working on a few different ideas that were placed in the Brave Box. It is turning out to be a useful resource for listening to the student body. Thank you for listening, we are now open for questions or comments.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Trusty Oppenheimer.
Thank you, President Wagers, really great report. Oh my gosh, you are doing a lot, all of you, so many things. I really loved the de-stress week. Is that the first time that you have ever done that?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's a new initiative, do you think that you'll do it again? It sounds like a brilliant idea.
I think it was a lot of fun right before finals.
Sure, yeah, everyone should have de-stress week, I think. That's great, and the Zen Room, I have seen that Zen Room, and that is a brilliant concept. So your principal, thank you for having that. But one of the things that really stood out to me, as you were talking through all the various activities and everything that you're doing, that reaches so many different audiences, where you said that learning takes place in amazing ways, inside and outside the classroom. And I think oftentimes, some people might forget that, that learning only takes place at a desk with a pen and a pencil and a computer and all that. So I love the fact that you highlighted that, and I think that's a good reminder to all of us that learning does happen in so many different ways, inside and outside the classroom, and you guys are doing it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Trusty Hawes?
There's a wager, thank you very much. Adriana and Shannon, great presentation tonight, thank you, very thorough, lots of stuff going on at Boise High. The Brave Box really stood out to me. I was just curious if you could tell us a little bit more about that. So that's obviously a box where if students have some suggestions or concerns, they would place that in the box. And then what happens after that? You may have mentioned something, but I'm just curious how that works after, after the suggestions are made.
Yeah, so we've tried out a few different ways of getting student input, and this is our most recent method. Basically, there's cards inside the box, and if students have anything, any ideas, they place it inside the box. For example, one recommendation we got a few weeks ago was to have more microwaves in the cafeteria so that students have different options for bringing lunches. And so we take those, and we have a team of students that looks at them, and then they start working on the things that we think we can implement at Boise High.
That's, that's great, that's very helpful, that's, love it. And then the last thing is, just kudos to the selection of the Christmas movie. Wonderful Life is up there, but I'm really glad you, Christmas Vacation, that was the top vote, you did a great, great job there. I'm serious, Clark.
Any, any other questions or comments on the Boise High present?
Thank you, Adriana and Shannon, appreciate your time, appreciate the report. And with that, if the students want to take off, you are welcome to. Thank you so much for being here and making the effort to come and let us know what's going on. And next we have one more award. They don't, they don't end, which is great. And I don't, am I doing this award? I'm on, I'm on this one? Excellent, excellent, it's always, it's always good to know these ahead of time. Actually, I knew about this one ahead of time, and this, I asked for this to be on the agenda. It is one of, I think, one of our most important awards from administrative side in the school board that we get this. And it's the meritorious budget award. And basically, what, what this award is, it's from the Association of School Board Officials International, which is ASBO, which is proud to recognize the Independent School District of Boise City for excellent in budget presentation with the meritorious budget award for the fiscal year 2022-23. Sheila, I'm gonna have you come up just for a second, because I, and I know you don't want to do that. Or you can talk from back there a little bit, I'll give you a choice, but you probably need to come up. Because this, this is a, this is a big deal for our district. Part of what we have to do is, we have to develop a high-quality, easy-to-understand budget, to share the district's goals and objectives internally with the community. And I only have, this is an easy question, because I'm giving you a softball. So how much work, what kind of effort does it take to get this? Because I know it's not a small thing, and I want to talk, you can talk about your team, and you can talk about what, just what goes into that.
Yeah, so as you know, I'm just continuing the great work that's been started, of course, by Nancy Landon and Josie Grammer, who were the starting, you know, the people who started this award for our district. And so it's a compilation of information from almost every supervisor and every director and everyone in the district. You know, if you read through the document, there's so much information in there about our district as a whole, not just the financial part, but just all the great things we do. So it really takes the whole team to get that information.
Perfect, I mean, it just shows, you know, we have transparency and accountability. Perfect. I mean, it just shows that, you know, we have transparency and accountability. If you've ever looked through the budget document, it is not a small, a small volume. But it is, it's a great way to look at all the different pieces of the district and all the amount of work, because, like you said, it's not just you. It's, it's every department that's reflected in that. And it's, you know, it's a good reflection of what we do in general. So, thank you for your efforts. Thank you, team, for your, the efforts, and for the, you know, this is really an award for them and you, and we appreciate it greatly. Any other questions or comments from trustees or administration?
I've got a question.
We're gonna let trustee Langley, and then we'll go to trustee Haas.
I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the organization that outlines the MBA.
ASBO, so the Association of School Business Officials. It's a national organization. So obviously, made up of school business officials from all over the United States and, and international. I think Canada also. It's a great organization to belong to, somewhere that you can go and, and get other information and ideas and collaborate with your peers. So it's, it's a, a great organization.
What an honor for us to be amongst the recognized from such a great organization. So, thank you for your hard work. Sure.
Trustee Haas?
Thank you, President Wagers. Essentially, that was my question. So, thank you.
Superintendent Dennis, President Wagers, I, I think it's important for the board to understand that one of the things about this award is it really does set a standard for what they, what is expected for true transparency in the budgeting process. And I believe this is about our tenth or eleventh year in a row, you know?
I can't say.
It's significantly number of years that we have, we have won this award by, from the national organization. And I think that it's really important for the public and for the board to understand just how important that is. It really sets a standard for what is expected nationwide as to what a budget document. So, congratulations, Sheila, and on your team.
Thank you. Follow up?
Sure. Trustee Langley?
Thank you. Just to follow up on Superintendent Dennis's comments, the work that you've done has made it possible for us to be the first organization to get that A-plus rating from the Moody's Organization on our bond, and for us to be able to go to the public and borrow money to create a better district for our constituency and be completely transparent that that is in the best hands it can possibly be. And every year that we go back and we tax our public, we are able to reduce our taxing rate because of the high quality of watching those numbers, being transparent with those numbers, and knowing we're doing our best with our public's finances at heart while we're trying to provide a top-level education. So, those things could not be possible. And this award is just one demonstration of how that quality impacts every single day of the quality of every child's education here. And thank you very much for that work.
Thank you, trustee Langley.
Okay. Or any other comments?
Thank you so much. Appreciate coming up. Sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, one more comment.
Dan Puller has let me know it's the twentieth year of the award, so, which I can only take credit for one year, right?
One year at a time, one year at a time. Trustee Gregory?
Yes, I will take the opportunity to say, one of our values is teamwork. I think that we heard that tonight from all of our recipients and now from Sheila, that it is teamwork, that, you know, our, our team doesn't work in silos. They're all connected. And they benefit from our facilities, to our paras, to our special programs, to our administrators, down to our business operations. It's, it, it gives me confidence as a trustee and makes it so I can sleep at night when I don't have to worry about the relationship. That's right. And, and as a, as a trustee, I am heartened to observe the relationship that happens between administrators and business, you know, all levels of the district, that you check each other, you know? And you might not be as loud and vocal as Nancy, but you know, feel free to be the bulldog when you have to. Because that's what keeps us all sharp. And then we have this document that really is a demonstration of excellence. And I'm proud to say that we were one of the first in the state to have ours online and being transparent and making it accessible. And I know that Nancy spent a lot of hours on the phone with patrons going through this document. Well, have you read the budget? You know, well, let me explain this to you how this works, and that's part of our charge. So, thank you, Sheila.
All right. Anything else?
With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Is there any item a trustee would like to pull from the consent agenda? During now, entertain a motion.
I'm to, President Wagers.
I moved to approve consent agenda items, one through five, enclosures.
Been moved, is there a second? From trustee Haas. Trustee Greely is a little slow. It's been moved to second. Any discussion? None. Good old vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items and enclosures, one through twelve, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to reports and recommendations. We have the textbook adoption process. We have supervisor Becker.
President Wagers, trustees, I'm gonna talk briefly about new legislation around textbooks and also talk about the process that we're going to go through with our first textbook adoption of this new legislation. New legislation passed last year around textbook adoption. Some of what passive and legislation we've already been doing in our district, some of it will be new with this new adoption. Some of the new things that will happen is that one half of the committee will now be persons who are not public educators or trustees. In the past, our committees were made up of teachers and administrators in our district. But now, thinking about what trustee Gregory just said about teamwork, we have this opportunity to welcome parents, students, and community members to join into this process. So I think that this legislation has opened up this process to us, including more people, more of our stakeholders to it. Our committee meetings will now be open to the public, similar to board meeting. And this happened before this new legislation, but we're going to allow for written comment throughout the textbook adoption, which always done our textbooks have been put out in the lobby, and people have been able to come and look at them. We're starting with AP Human Geography because our current textbook will no longer be accepted by college boards starting next year. So, we're kind of in a position where, go first. I want to give you a little bit of the timeline. So we'll have our first committee meeting, January thirty-first. It'll be open to the public. It'll be in this room right here. And from January to March, we'll pilot two textbooks in our buildings. And then I'll talk a little bit later about what that will look like. And then we'll come back together as a committee, April eighteenth, and revisit our reflections on the textbook, and then come to an agreement about which textbook we would like to bring to you either in May or June to get approved for the adoption. So, we're proposing a committee selection. We've started the selection process. We started right before winter break. And we're gonna have ten to sixteen members. It'll be Boise School District employees, teachers, and administrators. We have a student representative from Bora High School who will be joining us, and we'll have parents and community members as well. We opened up the committee application process before Christmas break, and it is going until this Friday. We advertise it on our school district websites, social media, and through junior high newsletters. The selection criteria for parents is that they need to be a parent of a current junior high student. So we're looking for parents who currently have students taking AP Human Geography, or parents who think their children are great. That they have some knowledge of AP Human Geography, although we have some teachers that will teach them along the way, and that they have good communication skills and an ability to run a team. Our first committee meeting in January, we'll do some norm setting. We'll outline what the process will look like, both what the state requirements are and then what our district requirements are. And then we'll give the committee members some time to review the pilot books that were chosen by the AP Human Geography teachers to pilot. They chose these books based on college board recommendations and based on the AP workshops that they all attended for professional development, and were recommendations from the teachers of those AP workshops. We'll review the AP Human Geography curriculum. The textbook needs to fit the scope and sequence of what college board has set. And then as a group, we'll identify the top criteria for our selection, for our rubrics. So we want our textbook to be both a useful textbook and also to fit our district values. During the months of June, or January, February, and March, teachers in both our junior highs and our high schools will pilot the two textbooks. While they are piloting the two textbooks, they'll be filling out the, the rubrics that the committee has created and prepare that feedback to come back for that second meeting. Committee members that are not teachers will also be reviewing the textbooks and filling out the rubrics during those months. And during that time, the books will also be available for public review in our library, or in our lobby, sorry. And we also have a really cool opportunity to put the books on our district website, so people actually don't physically have to come here. They can look at the online version of the textbook through the website and leave feedback directly on our website, which I think will open up an opportunity for more people to give feedback on those books. After the pilot is over, we'll come back as a group, revisit those norms, and then we'll review the feedback from the community, the rubrics from the classroom teachers, and from the other committee members. And then we'll make a decision on which textbook we would like to propose to you all when we come back. So, that is how we're gonna run our first textbook adoption under the new legislation. Are there any questions?
President Wagers.
Trustee Rosenthal. I really love the accessibility, writing those textbooks online and allowing that written comment, just so, you know, everyone can participate, even if, you know, you work long jobs or something like that, but you still want to be involved in that textbook selection. Really awesome. So, thank you for including that. I was wondering, how does the committee, so this is a committee of ten to sixteen folks, how do they come to a decision by vote? Is it, is it a, like, what, what does that process look like for that recommendation?
President Wagers, trustee Rosenthal, we will look at the rubrics and look up the scores on the rubrics.
Thank you.
President Wagers.
Trustee Langley?
Can you just describe a little bit about the difference between how we as a district and comply to state curriculum and then our curriculum choices versus how we would follow what the college board does, or specifically AP textbooks, which aren't guided by us?
President Wagers, trustee Langley, I think it's really important that, and this is something the committee will talk about, is that we're not making curriculum decisions on this committee, of the scope and sequence of the course is set by the college board. What we're looking for and what we're making a decision on as a committee is what textbook and textbook resources best support that scope and sequence and give our students the best opportunity to score well on the AP exam and out to well with our student learning.
President Wagers. I think, hold on. Trustee Haas.
Thanks, President Wagers. I have a question. So, what was the selection process involved in selecting the two textbooks for the pilot program? Thank you.
President Wagers, trustee Haas, college board has a list of about nine texts that they approve for, for their coursework. When a teacher teaches an AP course, they have to submit their syllabus and their textbook to get approved to teach that course. And so one of the books has to come off. That was the nine. This summer, our AP Human Geography teachers, about six of them, had the opportunity to go to a workshop at Centennial High School. During that workshop, they talked to other AP Human Geography teachers from around the nation that were attending the workshop, as well as the teacher who was teaching the workshop, and they got to see lots of the different texts, talk about best practices with texts, and those are the two that the, that the group of AP teachers that got together narrowed down that they could, they'd like to try out.
Thank you. That's helpful. Appreciate it.
We're gonna let everybody have one chance. First, trustee Oppenheimer.
Thank you, President Wagers. I think I have two questions. So, the first one being with the selection criteria for the committee, specifically the community members, who, who is charged with making that selection? And then my second question is, under the selection criteria, has knowledge of human geography, who has to have that knowledge?
I'm thinking of myself as a parent, and I don't know. Who has to have that knowledge?
President Wagers, trustee Oppenheimer. So, this, I, I will be a part of the selection process as well as a few other people. There's a rubric that goes along with the application that scores the application that community members or parents are filling out that will be some of our decision on. We also want to make sure that we have parents that represent different schools, some junior high, or some in the junior highs in Bora Quad, some Capital Quad. We want to make sure we're not taking just parents from certain schools, so that will play into it as well. Having some knowledge of AP Human Geography is not going to fill you on the rubric, but it is, it is somewhat important because it's a pretty different way of working at a social studies course. So it will be helpful when, when the community member parent sits down and looks at the textbook and looks at the rubric that they have some knowledge in that process. We will spend time at that first committee meeting with the teachers, walking the committee through the scope and sequence, and really touching on the things that are.
Back to trustee Rosenthal. Thank you, President Wagers. My, my question is. Wait, wait, trustee Haas. But I also did want to thank you for including that student voice on the committee. I think it's really valuable. After taking the class, I took Human Geography, and it's a really great class, and you learn a lot. So, and a lot of it's from that textbook. So, I think it'll be really valuable.
And President Wagers, trustee Rosenthal, I think also, we're in a unique position that a student who was on the committee went through AP Human Geography when we were in COVID and mostly learning online, and so they're really going to be able to give us a lot of feedback about the online research with the textbook.
Yeah, that's awesome. Any other questions or comments?
Superintendent Dennis, President Wagers, trustees, I think it's important also for everyone to understand that this is our first go-around with this new law. And it's, I, I know that Danny talked about this a little bit, but this is kind of, we are setting the model for how textbook adoptions will be done from here on out. And so Danny got to be the guinea pig in this. So as we go through this process and we develop the model for developing this process, we will be doing some review on, on the pros and cons of how this process went. So I don't think that it's, there's anything set in stone. It's our first attempt. We'll kind of move our way through this, and then as we do, then we'll make some adjustments to whether or not we need to have less people, more people. The rubric on selection, the knowledge base, all of those, we'll, we'll do a little review of. So I just wanted the board to be aware, this is our first go-around.
One, one quick question, supervisor. So, how's the application process going? Do we have lots of people that are interested? What, what's that look like?
President Wagers, we have about twenty-one applicants so far, which I think is really great, from, from many different schools, some who have students in AP Human Geography right now, some who have their children are interested in taking it later in junior high. So I'm really excited that we've had so many parents that are interested, and we, if parents still have this week to apply, and so I hope that.
Great. Well, well, thank you for leading us through this process.
Great. Well, well, thank you for leading us through this process and anybody out there that wants to, now's the time to apply. Any other questions or comments? No? Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation and the, and the work you went into it. I know that process, you know, once again, we're always about process. We have a great process or at least a great start to it. Then we can revise it and get back to it, but it's, it's that initial work we need to do upfront that makes us better. So thank you so much for that. With that one, we're going to move to other business, which I think is mostly Director Anderson, who's in charge of our other business.
Good evening. We have four policies that are coming to you for second read tonight. So if you have no concerns or issues about these, these will be all actually in effect as of July first. So.
Okay. Any questions or comments that we went through first reading on these last meeting? And now we're doing a second reading and then this vote will make them effective. So any questions or comments on any of these policies from the trustees? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Trustee Greeley.
President Wagers, I move approval of policies as outlined in Enclosures thirteen through sixteen, effective July first.
Second from Trustee Gregory. Any discussion? What, you have? Trustee Gregory.
Sorry, I have a comment. Just, just briefly, thank you to so many people who are involved in the, the process of policy review. This is another thing that makes it so that trustees can sleep at night is that we have lots of eyes on these policies. Sometimes the correct, the revisions are very, very minor. Punctuation, spelling, et cetera. Other times they're major and they require a lot more eyes on. But it just the process, back to your, your comment, the process makes it, gives it integrity. So, you know, it's, it's just great to be able to just be through, get them done and done well.
All right. Any other discussion? Trustee Langley?
I would just say these, this happens to be one of those very, very minor on these four policies. But also thank you for going that extra step with emergencies response so that we can have multiple people in the case of multiple emergencies responding. That's the only thing that's a slightly larger change and it's not a huge change at all of the policy, but it's very foresight driven. So thanks for doing that.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move to vote. All in favor of approving the policies in Enclosures thirteen through sixteen, effective July of 2023? Any votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Anderson. With that. All right. I'm assuming we still have an executive session?
Yep.
President Wagers.
Trustee Greeley.
I move to go into executive session according to Idaho Code seven four dash two zero six one B.
Second.
Second from Trustee Gregory. We have to do a voice vote.
Trustee Haas.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer. Trustee Wagers.
Aye.
Trustee Langley.
Aye.
Trustee Greeley.
Aye.
Trustee Gregory.
Aye.
Trustee Rajendhar.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. With that, we will go into executive sessions. We'll ask all folks. This is a, will be the non-open part of the meeting and then you can wait outside and then we'll, we'll come outside. But we're going to take a short break. Oh, we're going to move the other side because we have to do, or I'm sorry, you can stay here. We're going to move. And we'll have a little, a little short break for folks. Need a little short break.
The board meeting is currently in executive session and will resume shortly. The board meeting is currently in executive session and will resume shortly.
Obviously, if the superintendent has watched it.
Trustee Gregory.
Some of you may have received the email from ISBA with their press release concerning the governor's budget today. Lots of positive things and now the the work begins, I guess, to see what actually comes out of this stew. I think ISBA, IASA, and IEA are working in partnership. And we also have one of our teachers, a new teacher in the legislature, Sonia. Yeah, she'll be on the education committee. And so that's, she's very bright. And she's going to be a great voice in there, Chris Masaias and Janie. And who else? Are ones who've been there while Steve Birch is still there. So and Representative or Senator Lent will chair Senate Ed. So we'll see what the session has in store. We may have to, I think we'll have to be in contact with our legislators and the legislative committee is kind of working on a strategy, moving that forward.
Thank you. Trustee Gregory. Any other comments or questions, superintendencies, trustees? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Trustee Gregory.
Second.
Second from, second from trustee Haas, all in favor, or any, all in favor? Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.